United States of America, to give your public, which sustains one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councillor, it's called order, it's called the answer roll call.
Mayor Reidenhour.
Here.
Earl. Knox.
Yes.
Miller.
Here.
Neely.
Here.
Newland.
Here.
The minutes of the previous meeting were read and approved. So approved. This is the officer's report.
One million, six hundred and four thousand, one hundred and ninety dollars and forty-one cents in all funds, two hundred and seventy-eight thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars and ten cents in the general fund. And there were additions, which I believe you all should have a copy, just the two payment numbers on them. Those were additions to the bill recorded, the payment list that I gave you already.
Bill for Red Road Motion eighteen dash one dash one, Dr. Warren motion by.
So move.
Miller.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Earl. Knox.
Yes.
Neely.
Yes.
Newland.
Yes.
All right, let's move to committee reports. Pardon?
You want me to do the finance committee?
Sure.
Okay, so we have the permanent appropriations that are prepared for the finance committee. And on your guys' copy should be highlighted the different counties. They will say the 2018 permanent appropriation.
We have to move.
The highlight, yeah, first one, suspend the rules three weeks.
I'll make a motion to suspend rule of three readings and declare an emergency.
Second.
Miller.
Yes.
Newland.
Yes.
Knox.
Yes.
Neely.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
General fund appropriations 2018, total general fund appropriations six hundred eighty-one thousand, one hundred and sixty-nine dollars and... Total special revenue appropriation one hundred eighty-three thousand, four hundred thirty-two dollars and eleven cents. Total capital project fund appropriation fifty-nine thousand, five hundred twenty-eight dollars and eighty cents. Total enterprise fund appropriation one million, eight hundred and twelve thousand, ninety-seven dollars and thirteen cents. Total agency fund appropriation twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and sixty-one dollars and fifty-nine cents. Total all appropriations two million, one hundred and fifty-one thousand, five hundred eighty-eight dollars and sixty-three cents. I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance.
Second.
Shouldn't that be eighteen instead of...
Yep. Eighteen dash one dash one, yeah.
The 2018 permanent appropriation.
2018, right? Yes.
Yeah.
Could you lock off if I see, sorry.
That's okay.
All right, Miller.
Yes.
Newland.
Yes.
Knox.
Yes.
Neely.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Anything else to find? The police report.
After packing the stuff that I've prepared for you guys tonight, so I'll be jumping around a little bit. I noticed that some of this is listed in new business, but I'm going to talk about it here and you guys can address that new business if you'd like. My ending your report included with your report is a summary of the statistics from the police department over the past seven years. As you'll see, certain trends tend to be consistent year after year. The overall call volume has increased, the most... This past year was the most calls for service we've had since I took over in October 2009. Additionally, this past year, we experienced several calls of a more serious nature. This includes an ongoing homicide investigation, multiple sex abuse cases, and an increase in drug offenses. The more serious calls are very time-consuming and taxing on our resources, but we have been able to enlist the assistance of outside agencies to help with some of that. My vision for 2018 remains largely the same as it has over the past several years, continuing the visual presence over various day and night time hours combating the drug epidemic, enhancing the efficiency of the department as well, networking with other agencies to work diligently towards solving crimes that affect our village and beyond, or all reasonable goals, I think, are more achievable this year. One of the other areas that we're going to look at improving upon is we're actually going to be building, Fred and his crew are going to be constructing an impound lot for us on village property where when we have vehicles that are towed for criminal offenses, driving under suspensions, that type of thing, we'll be able to keep those locally. That will actually help the individuals that have their vehicles towed, it'll be a little bit less expensive for them, as well as it will allow us to keep control, you know, if we need to get a search warrant, that type of thing, we don't have to worry about going to a private tow company's impound lot and trying to figure out what their hours are and that type of thing. So that'll be coming, it'll be located down at the park. We're going to have a fenced-in area with barbed wire and that type of thing, cameras on it, so it's secure. So that, we're looking at doing that this year as well. Next section I have, as we begin 2018, the Augles County Municipal Court has seated a new judge, and with that, the shift towards modernizing the court system at the county level is starting. Because of this, I spoke with our clerk of courts, Diane Goddard, about what, if anything, we could do to stay current in our court system. Diane was very complimentary about our court, as we're very efficient. However, the cost of running, the mayor's court does tend to increase over time. To absorb the cost of conducting mayor's court and at the recommendation of the clerk of courts, I would like to ask council to consider passing in three readings, an ordinance to amend ordinance thirteen dash seven dash two, which I believe you have in your packet, which is an ordinance establishing a schedule of fines for traffic violations for the village of Waynesville. Also included with your packets, you will receive, you should have a current and the proposed ordinance. Just to summarize, while the base offenses would be increased by fifteen dollars, the second speeding offense amount would actually be decreased, so some of that would actually come down compared to what we're currently charging as we speak. So it is important to note that our rates currently, and even if this ordinance is passed, will still be lower than the Augles County Municipal Court rates, which is where the cases would be heard if they're not heard in mayor's court. So that's something when we get to new business, I believe it's new business, if you want to consider that, Diane, I know would be appreciative. The second last thing I have is a resolution, ordinance to sell items via govdeals.com. Also included in your packets, I would like council to consider passing a resolution authorizing the sale of personal property, including but not limited to equipment, tools, and supplies which are no longer needed for public use or obsolete or unfit for the use for which they are acquired by internet auction per Ohio Vice Code Section 721.15. Along with that, since there are few items that may garner more than a thousand dollars, I would also ask council to suspend the rules of three readings and pass an ordinance allowing for the sale of no longer needed property via an online website. Again, that should be in your packet as well, with a list of items that we'd like council to consider allowing us to sell. The reason we need both a resolution and an ordinance is this, the resolution must be passed annually to allow us to utilize the online auction site called govdeals.com per ORC 721-15. ORC 721-15 also mandates that if we have any property that we believe may generate more than a thousand dollars in an auction, then council must approve by ordinance the ability for the village to sell said property. To summarize what the property we are looking to liquidate, there are items we acquired through the 1033 military surplus program that we either no longer use, or items that we acquired that were not initially what we thought they would be through the program. And there are also some old office supplies and old tools the village no longer has any use for as well. So right now, this is the first round of items we would like to sell. Later in the spring or summer, we may provide council with additional items and proof of sale if we have items that may sell for over a thousand dollars at that time. Last thing I have is the holiday lights competition. I did send an email out to all of you guys regarding the winners of the property. We wanted to let you guys know before this meeting because the winners were notified in their January bills, so we didn't want you guys to be the last ones to hear who the winners were, but I know there were a couple issues with sending emails, so I'll just read this in record. The judges canvassed the village on Saturday, December 16th. The three judges were Erica Funk, Natasha Kaufman, and Pam Kennon. The judges were tasked to individually judge every property within the village limits that had holiday lights turned on. Judges assessed each property using a ten-point scale, with one being the lowest score, ten being the highest score, in each of three categories, light display, creativity, and overall festiveness. Just seven points separated the first and fourth place winners, so the competition was very stiff this year. First place was 219 West Wapakoneta Street. Second place was 105 Cook Street. Third place was 508 Morning Glory Drive, and fourth place was 533 Northwestminster Street. Just one property that was in the top four this year was in the top four last year, and that was 219 West Wapakoneta Street, which won by a single point this year, so it was very, very close. I do want to publicly thank the judges and modderific excursions for donating their time and the modderific excursions for the use of their party bus to transport the judges around town. With that, we're here an hour later, if there's no questions, that's all I have.
All right, let's move to...
I just wanted to say, coming out of, we're in January, and over the last few weeks, we got the coldest snap that we've had. There were some frozen water lines and everything, but we got through that okay. Snow removal went along fairly well, we thought, and so didn't have any difficulty with that. So hopefully, maybe it's over with for the year. We do live in Ohio. Wanted to report on the walking path project. Some of you are new to council, but we received grant money last year to not only assist us in purchasing, purchasing property, which that's all been finalized, but also to, we got grant to put walking paths in the park area and in that property. Meeting with the engineers, we're working on design now. We hope that that will go out to bid in February with an expectation to maybe start as soon as the bidding process is over, so hopefully, early summer that will, that process will start. So you'll see that activity, and I'll report back on that, especially once it goes to bid and then when the timeline will start. Wanted to report on, again, some of you were new, you may not, you may have been here to hear the final of it, but one of the things that came up in a lengthy discussion over several meetings was village's policy of utilities that affect rental properties and property owners. And so with that, council elected to take the position that the property owners would keep the property in their name and then also redefine the timeline associated with shut-offs. These were two totally different policies. And we are putting those in place. Now, the shut-off, the disconnect with the timelines, which in summary would be the fifteenth after the month that it's due, no matter who it is, the property will be shut off until it's paid, that delay when amounts paid in full. That is in place and is in operation. The policy about putting it in the property owner's name will take a little more time because we have to compile a list of contact information and phone numbers and give them appropriate time to notify them so that they can make that transition happen. But in the meantime, because as of today's date, the thirty days that it has passed and it's put in place, we are starting to put in the, if a prop, if a transaction of change in utilities to a location takes place going forward, we will implement that new policy. And what that policy consists of is that we will no longer be taking security deposits on residents because since the village has the opportunity to recover that cost at a later date if they have to through the taxes, there was no sense in requiring them to put it on deposit. So going forward, if somebody would come in to put the utilities in their name, they wouldn't have to pay that deposit. So we also have to make arrangements, and the policy that we have of putting their deposits back in the proper hands is that we're going to credit the accounts, that we were not trying to write checks and chase people down and everything, that account will be credited. So it's my goal that we have this in place and operational by the first part of March, but I'll report back next month how that's proceeding, and if it has to, it will go to April, but that's our goal, to get this in place, and then once it's in place, it should move forward. With that, because we have a lot to take care of, that's all I have, unless there's any questions. Thank you.
Okay, mayor's court report. One thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars was deposited into the general fund of mayor's court account for the month of December. Assignment of committees, committees will be, building, Knox, Neely; finance, Earl, Zimmerman; park, Earl, Zimmerman; safety, Miller, Newland; storm sewer, Knox, Neely; streets, Miller, Newland. The Augles County Regional Foundation delegate and alternate will stay the same, which is Miller and Knox. One more committee that we have is the property maintenance committee, I believe is what it's called, is that correct? And that committee consists of three, which will be Knox, Earl, and Neely. And with that, need to elect a council president, approve ten-four.
I'll make a motion for Bob Miller to be council president.
Second. Any other nominations? Closed nomination.
Knox.
Yes.
Neely.
Yes.
Newland.
Yes.
Miller.
Epstein.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
President. Okay, and what, what that consists of, council president for ten-four, is if for any reason I am unable to fulfill any part of my job, then council president for ten-four would step in. Okay? All right, let's go to old business.
I brought this up once before, Mike, and with spring coming on, I think it'd be a good time to do it. The signage at the industrial park needs some attention. The placards, the paint's peeling off and they look pretty rough.
And I did look at that after we talked, and I agree, not quite sure...
I see they did, but you signed up for it.
What the solution to that is, whether we...
The business, at least. I see, Dave must make new signs for business, because they looks new out there, when they sign.
Yeah, I just didn't know if it was just paint or if it was replaced, because the one looked like it was pretty materialy, as far as information. So is that our responsibility?
It is our, our side. So hopefully, with help from the current facility that's out there, maybe we can work together and get that accomplished that way, because a lot of that stuff was power cut if we get, I don't know what happened there.
It's probably going to be more of a more...
Yeah, yeah.
What happened, that commission?
Any other old business? Move on to new business?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution eighteen dash one dash two. Resolution authorizing sale of personal property, including not limited to equipment, tools, and supplies which are no longer needed for the public use or obsolete or unfit for the use for which they were required by internet auction per ORC 721-15.
Miller.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Knox.
Yes.
Neely.
Yes.
Newland.
Yes.
Do we have to have three readings to provide an emergency for this?
You don't have to, no. This is the ordinance for though, with the list of items, you know, you don't have to, if you want to do those emergencies, you can.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rule of three readings and declare an emergency. A second.
Newland.
Yes.
Newland.
Yes.
Knox.
Yes.
Neely.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance eighteen dash one dash two, an ordinance permitting the village of Waynesville Hut to sell no longer needed property via an online auction website.
Second.
Newland.
Yes.
Newland.
Yes.
Knox.
Yes.
Neely.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance eighteen dash one dash three, an ordinance to amend ordinance, ordinance thirteen dash seven dash two, establishing a schedule of fines for traffic violations for the village of Waynesville.
A second.
Miller.
Yes.
Newland.
Yes.
Knox.
Yes.
Neely.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Another ordinance here that we do every year, we normally do it as an emergency statement, is to accept the Ohio Basic Code, which is our book of law for the village.
Make a motion to declare an ordinance number eighteen dash one dash four.
A second.
Are you suspending the rules first? Do you want to do that, or do you want to do three readings?
We usually do...
Suspend the rules, okay. I'll make a motion to suspend the rule of three readings.
A second.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. All right, Miller.
Yes.
Newland.
Yes.
Knox.
Yes.
Neely.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance eighteen dash one dash four.
A second.
Adopting and enacting American Legal Publishing's Ohio Basic Code 2018 edition as a code that early notices ordinance for the municipality of Waynesville Hut and declare an emergency.
In a second.
Miller.
Yes.
Newland.
Yes.
Knox.
Yes.
Neely.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
That's all the ordinances, resolutions, good.
Before you move on, Mayor, I wanted to add in my report, and it's to tell you, received this today from the Augles County Recycle, commending Waynesville for recycling, and they give us a...
Dollar margin.
...acknowledged in that we successfully diverted thirty-two thousand, two hundred and forty-nine pounds of waste away from the landfill by recycling.
Wow. We still have some work to do out at Recycle, which we will continue to try to improve that out there. I know that we talked about putting some fencing out across on the west side so stuff doesn't blow, different things like that, but so far, I think we've got good response and got people a little bit to get used to how the system works now, that we're evidently doing it, so that's good. Will entertain any other new business anybody wants to discuss at this time?
Are they, are we able to finish putting up stop signs down there between where I live and you live? We still have a lot of people flying through there, especially in the middle of the night. I didn't realize it was that bad, but with my wife's out in the garage at night, she says there's...
What intersection are we talking?
Right there between where Kevin's, the road goes between Kevin and John's and me and you, that intersection there, you have two stop signs, one from your way and one from my way, and then the one that's going from the north to south, they don't have the stop sign?
It's not a street, it's an alley, so you may...
Oh, okay, okay. I do know that we have a stop sign that has not been replaced back up yet.
Right, it was struck. Somebody backed into it that lived in those apartments and knocked it down, but it's needed to be replaced.
Okay, that would be the one on the west side.
Southwest side?
Yeah.
After where the phone company...
Yeah.
That, that one is already slated to go back up.
Okay.
Just got to...
Yeah, because we have a lot of kids that go up and down that alley, and I know traffic, they, when they come, get their mail, and they come through there, they don't even stop, they don't even... they don't even look. And God forbid, one of the kids get hit, so.
Well, let's, let's start by getting that one back up and see if that corrects some of the problems, because a lot of people don't know to stop now.
Yeah.
Because it's only, only one direction going west, so if we get that taken care of, then maybe that'll slow it down. I do notice that there's a lot more foot traffic down through there all the way to DG.
Right.
And.
Yeah, so I think it would be of best interest to try, making it a little safer for people to walk up through there.
Okay. Anybody have anything else?
I'd like to welcome you, councilmen. I'm just glad to have you guys on board.
Within your committees that you are on, the requirement there is to just kind of keep an eye and an ear open for, if you're on a building committee or a street committee, try to field some of the concerns that people have, and relay that back to councilor and the whole as to recommendations and that type of thing, that's what the committees are for. If a committee needs to meet with, let's say, the police department, the administrator, the law server, or anything like that, set it up and do it. And that's how we move forward to try to correct some of the problems and to improve things within the community, so. So let's.
Mayor, I'm happy to report, I have nothing to report at this time.
Okay, thank you.
It's free.
Always, always a village.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
A second.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Newland?
Yes.
Knox?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Neely?
Yes.
Thanks, everyone.